December 8th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Casali, absent. Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Wexmanzki.
Here.
Mr. Repone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approve of the agenda. If there are no corrections, and if everyone's had a chance to review it.
Support.
Move by DeSico.
Support.
Support by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the November 24th, 2014 meeting. If there are no additions or corrections.
Don't move.
By Dallo, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we've got four primary issues. First one, under site plan, there are two. First site plan number 14-39, Justin Kalfis, Snappy Auto Service, regarding a request for a non-conforming use. Get your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, 48316. Here representing the applicant, Justin Kalfis, who is with me also in the audience as well. Essentially, this is a one-acre site. It's a non-conforming use. The building was built back in the 50s. It's been used for a wide variety of things. I think Mr. Win may fill us in a little bit on the history. Longer than I've been in Shelby Township. And the current applicant would like to move in. He'd like to certainly paint the building. It needs a little work for visual appearance. He wants to plant some trees there. Is a new entrance courtesy of the Macomb County Road Commission there. And of course, that front parking lot looks kind of bad, and he sort of intends to pave it, although he's not prepared to pave it before he moves in. He really would like to pave it, and it needs to get paved, he knows, for business reasons, because it just kind of looks bad, and it's got some pretty good potholes. So the type of business that it is, he's automotive repair, essentially not really specialized in anything particular, but general auto repair. The idea would be that they would have some, in the rear of the building, that'd be the east, they'd have an enclosed area with a six-foot chain link fence and some screening slats to park vehicles while they're waiting to be serviced. Again, that's not a place for any permanent storage, it's just a place for the vehicles to be put while they're waiting to get inside the building and serviced. Roughly 10 to a dozen vehicles might be out there at any given time. And again, all of the repair activities would be inside the building, as typical of your ordinance, with customer parking in the front. And I guess there's not a lot more to say about this one, other than it is a Class A non-conforming use. This sort of use doesn't usually sit in your C1 zoning district. So with that, I'm certainly available for any questions.
Okay. Six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence?
I'm sorry, eight-foot.
Now, is there going to be access off of Crawford?
Yeah, currently, if you drive out there, it looks like there's two driveways off Crawford. Actually, the...
One's on the lot to the south.
Yeah, exactly. That's a little, we'll call it a little spillover of prior activity onto the residential lot to the east.
Right.
They're actually planning to put the fence on the true property line and confine the use to a commercial portion. There is a driveway that they'd like to remain off Crawford. It'll be gated. Again, that's on the plan as well. So one of those two driveways will remain for use of the applicant.
One gate with access off that one off of Crawford?
Correct. And it will be gated.
Okay, so you'll, so, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Win?
Yeah, let me, if I could, give a little background about non-conformities and the Class A option. The zoning ordinance has to provide for uses that existed prior to the effective date of the zoning ordinance taking effect. Those are considered what we call non-conforming uses, and they're grandfathered in, which means they're allowed to continue, but they're not allowed to expand or change to another use. As they change, they need to move towards conformity. As Mr. Snyder indicated, the use was built in 1952. It's been zoned C1 local retail for an extended period of time. The last occupant was Synecory Landscaping, and all we approved for them to occupy the site for was for administrative offices. Those of you who may have followed this vicariously know that they took over the entire site. They had landscaping materials and supplies, and it was a mess. And Mr. Kirk's office in our department building went, through some litigation process, were forced them to leave the site. So now we're faced with another vacant building, and the challenge is, how do we reuse this building in a meaningful way to allow somebody to use it, but also take in the concerns the neighborhood has as well? So a number of years ago, the Planning Commission, the board, adopted a new ordinance that allowed for what we call a Class A non-conforming use, which essentially allows you to permit a reuse of a site for another non-conforming use. And the goal is to bring them into some reasonable conformity with the zoning ordinance. The challenge is, if you don't allow that, then there's a fear that you might have disinvestment in the site, and the site will become uplighted, and that'll have even a bigger impact on the neighborhood. The site to the north, we have Marv's Auto Electric, used to be bloom printing for years. Last year, I think, or the year before, we approved the auto use on that site. So we do it with some degree of care and consideration for the neighbors. So we have a site plan that was submitted, and I have just a few comments on that. One dealt with the surface of the parking lot, which Mr. Snyder referred to, that that might need some improvement. It wasn't clear from the floor plan if the entire building was going to be used for this purpose, and I see Pete shaking his head.
It is, yes.
Any exterior lighting improvements? I think there was a light installed on the rear of the elevation of the building to the east. Some shielding may be necessary to protect the neighbors that live on Crawford. There are some standards in the ordinance that need to be referenced on the site plan that deal with auto uses. Number one, all repair activities hopefully confined to a building. Interior, no outdoor storage of parts or equipment. That doesn't prohibit temporary storage waiting for repair, but you can't have a vehicle stored on the site for a period in more than two weeks. Adequate means of waste disposal, and adequate measures to ensure noise, dust, and odor and fumes are abated and not become a nuisance. So I think, given the circumstances of the site and what was there before, I think this is a reasonable reuse with some conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Win. To the board, any questions or comments?
Do you have a question? The hours of operation?
General business hours, to my knowledge, so there'd be, you know, seven perhaps to about five, six o'clock in the evening. So seven o'clock perhaps, seven o'clock AM perhaps to six o'clock in the evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, a question or maybe just a comment to Mr. Win and to anyone else on the board that wants to chime in. We approve these non-conforming uses with the goal of trying to get to the original zoning, to a commercial usage. By allowing these type uses to continue, and why, in this case, it might be a little, the circumstances might be a little bit different, is because the county just, and the state just invested a lot of money on Van Dyke. And we're seeing great development at both, you know, potential development 25 and Van Dyke, and then what's being developed at 26 and Van Dyke is continuing to develop. So I mean, there's going to be more of a demand for property on Van Dyke. And I mean, one argument could be made is if we deny this and really encourage the owner to seek, you know, a C1 usage in that property, you know, perhaps this is the best time for us to get this conforming.
Chairman, can you... We had that conversation.
Yeah.
I think it's a real valid point. The question always becomes, what's, where do we reach the tipping point where it makes economic sense to do that? And I think it's fair to bring that up. The goal of the Class A was to recognize that these uses typically don't disappear, but we have to find some reasonable accommodation. But at some point, you know, it makes, it maybe makes sense to start all over, like we're talking about the, later tonight, we'll talk about 21 and Van Dyke. You know, at some point, getting rid of that building makes more sense than reinvesting in that building. And that's the question you have to, and maybe this is just an interim use until such time as the owner knows that it's better served by going elsewhere.
Well, you know, and I think back to the Synecory days and the issues that we had to deal with, and you may have dealt with the owner of the building more than I did, but my perception was that this was a person who allowed this thing to get out of control, and it impacted the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Pretty significantly. And so much so is that we had to, you know, we had to use township resources to sue those individuals to get them to comply.
Yeah. Certainly, I understand the issue, and again, you're right, the non-conforming use, it allows a use that doesn't usually work in that zoning category to persist, and you really do have to look at what the tipping point is. Couple things in the applicant's favor here. First of all, he's a township resident that actually lives a little bit farther down on Crawford. Okay, so part of the utility of this site to him is that it's close, and they know those neighbors, they know those people, and they're very interested in being good neighbors to the township and moving in and making it look good, not only for just the business reasons, but they're part of the community as well. And, you know, obviously, the applicant is not the landowner. Of course, the landowner signed the application, but he's not the landowner. I think these things really are purely market-driven. At some point, that brand-new driveway off Van Dyke is going to make sense, and they're gonna, they're gonna say, hey, we're taking that, we're taking that building down, and we're gonna put up brand-new fancy stuff. Whether it's this site alone, which is pretty small to redevelop as C1, it's perhaps possible, but you're probably gonna have to add acreage to that site to make something, we'll call it, you know, of financial nature, of financial investment-worthy nature. You're gonna probably have to add a parcel or two to the north to make that all work. So again, I think the best way to look at this is to look at this as an interim use. This probably isn't something that's gonna, that should persist for 20 more years, but it's something that you want it to look good for the next maybe four or five years, until you get a redevelopment option that involves this parcel and perhaps some other parcels as well. So that would be my response to the issue.
Okay. I saw in a note somewhere that the landlord or the applicant was gonna paint the building?
Yes.
It was gonna be the purple, like...
We'll try to avoid bright purple. I promise.
Is that a second, is this a second location? Is, because there is a snappy transmission at the 14th and Van Dyke in Warren.
Chairman, I think the coat of paint in and of itself is enough reason.
I'm not saying, you know, there's definitely some good things about this, but...
Okay, what color is it?
I tell you, there was a correspondence from one of the neighbors, and I just wanted to kind of check off real quick, and a lot of these will probably go to Mr. Win. But light pollution, you've already addressed that. Hours of operation and noise, everything has to be done inside, and then we addressed hours of operation. Barriers, there'll be an eight-foot fence that's slatted, so that should eliminate, right? Fluid eliminations, I imagine that, and removal, that's...
Yeah, that kind of stuff's fairly well-regulated, but the, the site does not have a, does not have a commercial dumpster on it. They'll be storing the materials inside until they're removed, you know, they have the roll-up doors in the back, so...
Car storage with two weeks, Mr. Win?
Yes.
Is the maximum, and it's not really storage, and there's no, no car sales out of this location?
Correct.
Won't be testing brakes on Crawford?
Don't test brakes on Crawford.
Or, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
I'm saying, no, I think it's a fair, you know, it's residential neighborhood, and there are kids in the neighborhood.
Correct.
You know, okay.
No left turn.
I don't need any. Test, oh, hey, I jumped ahead. Okay, so there's a concern on traffic flow, but I don't know that, given that we just put a five-lane road on Van Dyke, that that's building appearance, they're going to re-landscape, sod, do the parking lot and paint. Was there anything, other improvements?
Again, they'd like to repave the parking lot in the front there. I don't know if you mentioned that, but yeah, there's some, there's some tree plantings in the front. There'll also be a submission, it's not part of the submittal, but they'll be submitting for a nice monument sign there as well.
Okay. Okay, and then storage and disposal of parts that is likely is regulated, and there'll be nothing that's seen through to the neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman, if we, if when, if this is approved, then in you, the condition, one of the conditions would be that, obviously, the comments we have in the engineer would be that those four requirements that are part of the zoning ordinance would be inserted as notes on the plan, which gives us the enforcement ability if they violate it, which would be my comment number five, A through D.
Okay.
I guess, given, given the concern we had with the last one and the amount of time that we invested, I want people, you know, well, I want to be accommodating, I also want people to know we're observing and watchful of the, of how this is being done. Not that we're gonna look over your shoulder, but we're gonna be looking over your shoulder.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Kirk, I want to actually, I'll call in our attorney to read that section of the ordinance.
Read it, but the Planning Commission can impose conditions on this use, including time limits, to assure that it continues to meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So if there's anything in addition to those, you can also do it, as long as it's related to it, but in addition to those, if you have anything else, you can add that.
Okay. Okay, back to the board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wexmanzki.
To the petitioner, two questions. What type of equipment do you feel you need to install in terms of lifts or cranes? Is the building suitable structurally to support cranes and lifts and the concrete base? And secondly, what or how many employees do you expect to have there?
Much, come on up, and then let me get your name for the record.
As far as a hoist, probably two to three. And it used to be a machine shop way back when, so there's about 12 inches of concrete, which you only need six to run a hoist there. So it's, and then as far as employees, you know, I gotta get going, but, you know, two to three, plus me, hopefully, but...
Customer waiting area?
Sir, what was your name?
Justin Kalfis.
Okay, address?
8430 Crawford, Shelby Township, 48316.
Great, thank you.
There'll be a customer waiting area?
Yes, there will be.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. I know you addressed this somewhat. So there is going to be an entrance to Crawford Street, but it's gated? How does that work? So will it be used?
Well, yes, it will be used. They'll have a, they'll have a sliding, rolling gate of the same chain link slatted material as the rest of the fence there, so that they could access Crawford, or, excuse me, could access the rear of the building from Crawford. The roll-up doors are on the east side of that building, and if they had, you know, there may be a delivery or something that would need to come in, it'd be a lot easier to get to the back of that building by coming down Crawford and coming in through the back, because the entrance is, it's right there, it's set up really for, for people to use those rear doors. So that's, that's the reason they would like to keep the entrance on Crawford, but they're gonna gate it, because it's not gonna be something where they want everybody driving in and out of it. It's, it's for deliveries, it's for, you know, special situations where you'd, where you'd see, you know, a delivery or a truck that would have a little longer route getting around up to the north of the building.
Well, the only entrance will be right, that driveway that's right by the building, because it exists now?
Correct.
Okay, so back in that back corner by the residential lot, that will all be fenced with no access?
Right, in fact, if you, if you remember from the site, there's a telephone pole there right on Crawford.
Right.
That's the property corner. It looks like the, you know, the gravel keeps going for another 30 feet.
Yeah.
The property line's right at the telephone pole, and they're putting the fence due north there, so they're cutting that gravel off from the commercial site, so your spillover issues that you had with the prior occupant of the building aren't gonna occur anymore. There's gonna be a fence there.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure? Yeah? Is there anything else, if anyone in the audience said something I didn't cover, then please come on up?
I don't know how they could have much to say, because they heard nothing he said. Right?
I agree.
You didn't hear anything he said?
I did hear him, but it's very faint back there.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Janee Kowalski. I reside at 8225, I'm sorry, I'll speak a little louder. My name is Janee Kowalski. I reside at 8225 Crawford. I'm three houses behind where this proposed site is, and actually, the fourth residential lot, because there is a residential lot that is vacant. Several of us in the neighborhood in that area have gotten together, and we gave you a list of some of our complaints or our concerns in regards to the area. When we're speaking of, my biggest concern from my point of view is the rolling gate. When you first turn onto Crawford, you're going to see this building and a huge gated wall. So as a resident, and if I'm looking at potentially selling my home in the area because of everything that's going on in our area, would somebody really want to come down my street and buy my house? Because when the first thing they see is this huge gate, eight-foot is huge coming down our street. It's wooded area, and I, I just beg of you guys that you would not allow this to go in, and that we put some kind of stipulations as to what is going to be viewed back there. You know, this is an industrial backing up to residential. It's, it's gonna be an eyesore, and we're not too happy about it. Light pollution, we're concerned. They put up a sodium light in the back, and it floods our neighborhood. And even with shielding, we're concerned about the wattage, because it shines right into, right now, it currently shines right into children's bedrooms, parents' bedrooms. I mean, yeah, light's good, it keeps down crime, but too much light also, you know, when you have to buy special shades for your children's bedroom and the light's still coming through, that's a problem. Also, you know, we're concerned about the noise. Previously, by the applicant, this summer, we had problems with noise, you know, before they even got to this point. They were down there working, the hammering, the tinkering, revving engines, and it wasn't in a courteous manner. It wasn't like, oh, in the middle of the afternoon, it was all hours of the morning, day, and night. And with having hours of operation at 7:00 AM, I have a three-year-old at home. I don't want to hear engines revving at 7:00 AM. And I'm really concerned that even if it's the business hours of 7:00 to 5:00, what's the latest time that they can be in that building working? So is it 8:00 o'clock at night, they have something that needs to be done the next day, that they can be in there tinking, hammering, hoist-going, whatever's going on in there? I mean, we were in this situation with Synecory, where they were in there all hours of the night raising holy ruckus, and we had to listen to it. So that's a huge concern. Barriers, when we talk about barriers, you're talking an eight-foot fence with slats in it. Why can't we put some type of green belt in there, where they have to put shrubs, trees, something to make it conform within what's around us, some trees, I mean, our property behind us, that's up for contention, but it's all wooded, there's lots of woods in the area. You know, some kind of barrier between the residential and the industrial, so it's more pleasurable to the eye to look at, where when we're out in our front yard, we're not looking at an eight-foot fence with slats in it. Fluid elimination, there's some concern, because there's several children in our neighborhood, and people, a lot of people have animals. We are in a situation with Synecory, and I know you can't hold these people responsible for what was happening with Synecory, but they had the fluid runoff from their vehicles going down our ditches. And it's the same concern, will there be fluid runoff from this business going down our front ditches? Because their ditches drained down my front ditch. They don't drain out towards Van Dyke, they come down our ditch. Car storage, I appreciate the two-week minimum in regards to that, but who's really gonna enforce that? I mean, do we have to sit there and take pictures every day, keeping track of how many, you know, I mean, we don't want to look like a used car lot back there. You know, safety concern, once again, there's tons of children, and yes, parents should watch their children, but you never know what's gonna happen. And even if they are indoor lifts and they have that back sliding gate, is there safety rails put in place that if something gets caught in there, a child gets in there? We have concerns in regards to having an automotive repair shop backing up to a residential area. And the testing of the vehicles, I will take them at their word that they're not gonna test out on Crawford, but there's, their track record's not that stellar that this hasn't been happening already in our neighborhood. Increased traffic flow, I understand, Chairman, that, you know, you said that there's five lanes. Our concern is with that gate off the back end, that they would be using it, not just for special deliveries, but we bring in vehicles in and out for repair. We had previous problems with Synecory that in the morning, they'd have their delivery vehicles and such backed up, that my husband couldn't get out at 8:00 AM to go to work. He would have to go back through Belford and Belmond to get out. So these are our concerns as far as traffic flow, you know, what are they gonna do? I mean, once again, are we gonna end up in the same situation as we did with Synecory? And that is our fear. The signage, you know, I mean, I know that that's gonna be a different meeting, but, you know, we are concerned with the size of the signing. I mean, it's already five lanes trying to pull out of our residential street onto Crawford. You know, where are they gonna place the sign, and how much of a barrier is that gonna be for us being able to see traffic both ways? One of our other complaints and concerns is storage and disposal of parts. Are we gonna see racks of transmissions and all this other stuff sitting outside, or is everything gonna be stored inside? So, I mean, and then with the fluids, who's also, if there's an oil, if they spill fluids, who is responsible for that? Is the township responsible? Is it, you know, are they responsible for the chemical cleanup? These are our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please sign in, right there?
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
I live on 8200 Crawford. Have any of you actually been out there to look at the building and where the site is compared to the homes on the building? You have. You realize this, I think some of you are not, it sounds like you're making this sound it's like these buildings coming along Van Dyke where the subdivisions are 500 to 600 yards away. I can literally hit my sand wedge to this building from my front yard. It's maybe 80 yards. So to talk like an eight-foot fence, barriers, is not an eyesore, it's just ridiculous. I mean, I look, it's literally 100, I mean, it's probably from that corner to maybe that building, that office right there. That's how far my house is from this. AJ, the man in the blue lives right next door to this place. It's 60, 70 yards. And then with the Synecory, we had vehicles upon vehicles backed up in there. This place is actually dealing with repairing vehicles. There's gonna be 20, 30 cars in that parking lot. I mean, two weeks, like I said, I just don't think anyone understands how close this is to our homes. It's just, I'm sorry, it's just really, really frustrating. I mean, it's gonna, there's, no one could tell me different. It's not gonna drop our property value. There's no way, it's not gonna happen. I mean, can anyone tell me different? I mean, would you want to buy a house that's 70 yards away from, in Shelby? That's why I moved out here. I don't, you know, I have nothing personal against these guys, I just want to protect my neighborhood and my home and my value. I mean, you know, nothing against Warren, I don't want to live in Warren, I want to live in Shelby Township, where it's supposed to be residential, where it's supposed to be urban, where it's supposed to be still a little bit country. I understand that the business is coming, I get it, I'm not naive, I know someone's coming in there eventually. But why can't we get something quiet, like an insurance company, or a heating and cooling company that runs their business out of there, something small, something quiet? 7:00 AM hours operation? Is it open on Saturdays? Is it gonna start at 7:00 on Saturdays? Well, just, yeah, thank you.
Can you please sign in?
My name is AJ Plektah, and I'm in the first-built house on the street on the north side of Crawford. I'm at 8170... I'm at 8177 Crawford and Shelby. And I was one of the lucky people to have to deal very closely with Synecory and the last resident and the actual owner of the property before Synecory even moved in. I moved out to Shelby Township in 2000 away from East Point. And I moved out here specifically because at that time, it was a rural route. In fact, that's what it's still classified. If you look at the mail, it says rural route, whatever, '06 or something like that. So myself, like Janee and Chris and other people on the neighborhood, we are very concerned with the look and the feel and the ambiance of auto repair shops coming in literally right next. My five-year-old can throw a softball and hit the building and that's how close I am to the property. I don't, again, like Chris, I am not naive. I do know stuff is coming in, but it should fit with the look and the feel of the neighborhood. I do believe, I just read in the source that the zoning board disapproved a cell tower because it didn't fit in with the look and feel of the neighborhood. It's the same thing here. I am not against anybody making money, having a business. By all means, go forth and conquer. That's what America's for. But it has to conform to what the neighborhood is. We can't have all of these exceptions in place and allow it to just run rampant. And that's what could happen. And you know, we can't blame them for what Synecory did. I understand that. But you know, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. I'm very concerned with the light pollution, the safety, the noise, oh my God, the noise. When the tool and die shop was there, they were in there at 4:00 a.m. hammering away. And that was when I had trees to block all of the noise. Those trees are now gone because they either died or were taken down improperly. It's wide open, guys. I can't have this against near my house again. I just can't. Put a wall in, put a better green barrier, something, arborvitae, block this stuff from the neighborhood. It would so change the look and feel just by putting the arborvitae in and blocking it. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon.
Good.
Christopher Kalfus, Justin's father, 8430 Crawford, Shelby Township, 48316. To address some of the issues I heard here tonight, as far as the light issue, Synecory had the lights on all four corners of the building. When he left, he took them. The building was dark and it was not good for the back of the shop because it, you know, you can get people breaking in. They did break into the little house on the property and kicked the door in, tried stealing some stuff out of there. So I went and replaced the lights. I thought it was the neighborly good thing to do. The gentleman in the blue, can't remember his name, sorry, but he asked me if there was a way I could turn down that light because it was kind of bright for shining in his, in his room. I picked it up at Home Depot and I have one in my yard in my garage as well. Just a regular light. It lights up a 500-feet area in front of it to just open up the area. So it's good for safety. That's the first issue. Second issue is, as far as they're talking about driving up and down Crawford and we don't have a good record and stuff like that. I've lived on this street for almost 22 years. I waited 21 years to get that building for my son. And I do auto repair at 14 and Van Dyke and he works with me six days a week, 10, 12 hours a day. Kid don't so much as have a traffic ticket on his license. He's a good kid. He don't do drugs, he don't smoke, never been in trouble. I'm sure he's done a background check. Well, I want to get him started in life the right way. He's a good mechanic. It's all he thinks about. Eats, drinks and sleeps mechanics. That's what he likes to do. He loves it. Our customers love him. He's a good person. We're good people. We're Christian people. My wife, my daughter, they work for Macomb County, work for handicapped children. What I hear tonight back here about shutting us down, I believe they're just for some reason jealous. I don't know why to say that, but they don't want us to be there. Why, I don't know. The lady in the red hair back here, I don't even know her name. She started this petition when you guys had stuff going on for a building back there. Put it in my wife's face, don't tell the board. And she's like a cult leader that she tells you what to and not to say. And then we come down the street one day and she starts.
Sure, once you're limited to, you know, just the conversations.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I'm trying to hold all this in because we're just trying to open a business.
About personalities. This is about.
Okay. I'm just trying to open a business here and what I'm hearing back here is just crazy. I'll do whatever we have to do. We'll put up trees, green fence, six-foot, eight-foot, whatever they want. We'll make it look beautiful, not like Synecory. There won't be noise at night. We work from 7:30 till 6:00 at my store. We shut the lights off. We go home. I want to go home. I'm tired. He's tired. We don't work till eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night. That'll never happen, ever. Six days a week, Saturday, we work till 1:00. The rest of the day, we want to enjoy our family or do what we're going to do. We want to make the place look good. The corner looks terrible. Synecory didn't do anything. It's white, it's ugly, it's nasty. I want to paint it. We want to make everything look nice for our city, for our street. We want to work on our neighbors' cars. If you go to the next street, you can talk to our neighbors. We fix all their cars for the last 20 years. They all love us. I could have called them up and said, be here tonight. I didn't. I'm just telling you like it is. We're good people, want to open a store for my son and whatever you guys decide, we have to go with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yes, back to the board. Any comments, questions? I don't understand a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waxman.
Question, Mr. Winn. The C1 current zoning, would that permit something like a Tim Hortons or something to go in with 200 cars a day?
Not, it would not allow fast food with a drive-through.
It would allow fast food, though.
It would not allow that type of fast food. You could have a coffee shop there, but they couldn't have a drive-through window.
Do they have a party store there?
Yes.
So there could be a lot more traffic and?
There could be uses in C1 under the current zoning that would generate some other types of nuisance.
Okay. Somebody mentioned insurance business or something like that. That's also?
A general office would be allowed, yes.
That's commercial?
Yes.
General office, okay. But retail is basically the intent there?
Yes, or again, offices are permitted use in C1. The question really becomes, is this building, can it, is it lend itself to that?
Site seems quite small to me for any retail.
Parking would be a little more of a challenge. They'd have to put, they would have to repave the back and use that for parking.
It's awesome.
Okay.
Mr. Snyder, is there any possibilities that you give us a final look of the site after the beautiful paint that they want to do? Maybe mortify the trees, change the fence, the way of the fence might be looking, just final looks of the whole site, maybe in color so we could see it and even the neighbors' concerns would be solved with that?
You know, certainly that would be possible to do. Again, the whole issue of the fence and the screening fence, I thought it would be, if I left it off, it would be, it would be asked for. You know, those sorts of things are, you know, you're not, it's not normally something that you'd want to, that's not the kind of building you'd like to see the back of usually. I don't have any problems, you know, if you were going to approve it with a condition tonight, a condition of moving that easterly, that easterly fence over 10 feet and putting some plantings along that fence line, you know, I think the applicants made it clear that that would be, you know, that would be an option that would be acceptable to him, that would sort of clean up the look from, from the east. Unfortunately, there's really nothing you're going to do to clean up the look from Crawford. The building is right on the property line on Crawford and, you know, it's just right there. So, you know, I can, yeah, we could pick a paint color, but again, I think we're in a situation where we really sort of need to decide, you know, as a commission and as a community to decide if this is the sort of thing that needs, that can go here with a condition like, like that, so.
Chairman. Mr. Wyer. I would, picking up on what Mr. Snyder said, I would think limiting the fence height to six feet gives it more of a, less of an industrial character. The eight foot's more, we wouldn't allow us a fence over six feet in a commercial zone in classification. So limiting it to six foot and doing the six-foot, or six-foot plantings on the east property line, I think is a reasonable condition. You know, you can adjust the lighting. I think the nuisance issues here can be addressed in a meaningful way. That's not to say we're not going to have problems, but you know, those, I think those could be mitigated through some additional site corrections.
Isn't the landlord also own the residential lot?
Yes, he does. The residential lot immediately east of this is owned by the same landowner who's leasing to the, to Snappy Auto, yes.
Okay. So perhaps along with some, maybe an arborvitae or some sort of plantings along that fence, maybe some other plantings could be put in there?
Meaning, for instance, like a ten, moving the fence over onto the commercial property 10 feet? Because usually the screening buffer, if there were one, would go on the commercial property. So if we moved it over 10 feet and put some arborvitae and maybe some lower, you're talking about some, some lower screen plantings? That's, that's something we can work out with Mr. Winn, certainly he's.
You had a layer of plantings at different heights. Even just the arborvitae and then some burning bush or something in front of them that really fills in some of the year. I think that gives it a little more professional look to it. That extra layer, I think, helps.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wyer.
I thought Mrs. Kowalski came up with some very good questions. Now, Mr. Winn advised me that most of them had been addressed by the petitioner. Would you go through them again?
You want me to go through them?
You or he, it doesn't matter.
Let me summarize.
But let me, before you do, and I want to express the concerns of the people living in that area. And I'll take it from something that you wrote. The existing building was constructed in 1952. The last occupant of the site was a landscaping contractor to use the rear parking lot for storage of landscaping equipment and supplies that was never approved by the township. Now, how do we tell these people that, how do we convince these people that you're going to do what is right to the site? That's my question. So if you want to go through them, I would appreciate it.
Let me go through the list because I, because I think I can address how the, how the site plan either meets it or could be modified. The first one is light pollution. If those lights are indeed not shielded, they need to be shielded. All the lights have to be directed down to the ground and not project.
That's very minor, right?
Well, it's fixable, yes.
Yes, okay.
Noise and then we're addressing hours of operation. The zoning doesn't allow any outside activities that would repair cars. Everything has to be confined in the building and then we could attach a condition limiting the hours of operation to what was referenced by the owner. The barriers, I'm assuming that deals with landscaping. Mr. Snyder's offered us an alternative to the fencing that would add some natural landscaping.
Will that be put in writing?
If, you could make it a condition of your approval.
You have no objection to that, do you?
No, I have no objection. No. Attach that as a condition of approval is acceptable.
I almost think that the number of these things, and just given the history of the site, and again, it's not to the folks that are coming in now, you're now paying somewhat for the sins of your, the prior tenant of the building, is that we see this all in writing, that this, it'd be that the landscape, everything that we're addressing, the lighting, the landscaping all being a plan that we then take action on.
Chairman, I think in that, in that spirit, I think maybe postponing this and getting it all corrected would be the smarter thing to do.
And then we can then, you know, January 12th, is that our next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
Then we can, we can take it up then.
I'd rather do it that way than try to do it on the fly and say this for everybody. We've had, you know, we've had a, I'd rather make sure we reach a comfort level for as many people as possible, if that is possible.
Yeah. For my, for my edification, could we just make sure we continue through the list so that when you get a new plan, I know that I've done?
Well, I'll give you the minutes.
What you want?
I'll give you, it's part of the record. I'll give you the list.
Okay.
I think it's a better way, it's probably the more effective way to do it.
All right, that'll work. So I just want to make sure that I can appropriately address and you get back what you're expecting.
Great. And if we get that in advance of the meeting, perhaps then we can share what the residents do that they can see.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waxman.
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to move to table this request for further development by the petitioner to be brought forward at a future meeting, addressing all the concerns expressed here today.
Support. Okay, moved by Waxman, supported by Pone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Waxman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Chair Wiltjes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item. Site plan number 14-40, William and Jennifer Beatham, 5000 22 Mile Road. Another request for non-conforming use.
Good evening. My name is William Beatham. This is my wife, Jennifer. We reside at 5000 22 Mile Road, Shelby Township, 48317. That's my, well, my grandmother's passed now, but that's been my home for 32 of 42 years. And the 10 years, I've still been in Shelby Township for, for the 10, so. I went to Yule Elementary, started with Ms. Rosa. Some of you may know, some of you may not, but, and then I graduated Eisenhower in 90, so. I know it's, it's not conforming and everything. I know we made the bad mistake of being there before they changed the zoning and everything, but it's always been home. We've always fit in, so to speak. We know the neighbors. My brother used to work for Party Time Ice Company. It's just, it's home and we'd like to stay there. I think we're here tonight just to, to go to Plan B so if there was an event of destruction or wind damage or whatever, that we can actually rebuild, so. Class A, right, I'm sorry. So we're here to, first, peace of mind and sure footing. How's that sound?
Mr. Winn.
This is the, it's curious that we have two Class As on the same meeting and this is sort of the other application of this, the more common one where you have a residential home in a commercial or an industrial zoning district. And the practical problem that these folks face is pretty common, is a difficult to refinance or sometimes I think you express the concern about getting homeowners' insurance because of its non-conforming status. Because if the building were damaged by fire or tornado or some other act of God and it was more than 50% of the value, they couldn't rebuild. So we generally allow that, always, always allow some people to grant this status fairly routinely. The concern we have here is the site's a little bit of both. It has, you know, having driven by there and got a report from the building department because they review all these, and there are some aspects of the site that are more commonly found in industrial. For example, there are some supplies and materials outside that would be considered outdoor storage, which are certainly not common in a residential district. So I guess my response is I certainly think there's some value in considering this, but you can't have it both ways. I mean, I think some movement is necessary in the applicant's behalf to make the site look more residential, too, you know. Piles of tires, you know, in front of the one et cetera building didn't strike me as being a residential application. So having said that, I think we need some response to that.
Response would be that township take that in consideration in the homestead. My taxes are actually split, 70% residential and 30% commercial. So I don't even get, you know, but I mean, I do address that and my grandmother passed away in June. I want to make it, it's like the next link in the chain, so I want to make it pretty. I really do. That's my home. I got a granddaughter now, so that's home.
Chair, I guess I'd just like to see some sort of plan or some sort of response for timeframe as to what could be cleaned up when.
Okay.
That's, I guess, that's what I think our, our goal is, or otherwise, I, I think there's some value in what they're asking for, and I would support that.
Is there a percentage? I mean, does, does the ordinance look at, you know, percentage of usage and determining?
Really doesn't. It's your discretion. This is the first one we've had that had a little bit of both.
My unique piece of property. My name's Jennifer Betham, and one of the reasons that we're looking to go for the Class A is because we would like eventually to have the option to refinance, so we can beautify the home. Because we've actually, over the years, I don't know if anyone's noticed, he's done a lot of work. We've removed big pieces of equipment from the property. We filled in a big pool that was there, and it was kind of a big ice orb, because they had a big fence around it. We've taken down some dead trees that were there. We're, it takes a lot of time to bring things back to a beautiful state. And, and in the past, too, that piece of property you're talking about with the industrial, where the tires are, which is easily fixable. We can take care of that right away. But that's had a history of being a mess, and we are very adamant about keeping it tidy and not looking like that ever again.
Okay, so preparing a plan to submit that, that addresses all of those issues with, with a timeframe as to when they're going to be addressed, isn't an issue?
No, it's not an issue.
Perby?
No, they just, they agree that preparing a plan with the timeline.
I think that's fine.
And, and then, I think, once that's submitted, then, you know, I guess, my preference would probably be to table this request until we receive that, receive that document. But then again, that could be something that we put on the January 12th meeting and, and deal with it then, provided.
Is there anything you can do to resolve this this evening?
I mean, there are a number of issues that have, that have existed there for some time, and I think.
Do you have a list of them, Mr. Wynn?
Well, the, the.
Yes.
I'll tell you the ones that came to our attention immediately. One was from the building department. There's a, west side of the property is a small shed that appears to be in disrepair.
The white one?
And there's other, other reference was to the Quonset Hut type building that was in some level of disrepair. Black foundation supporting instructions of falling apart and missing pieces. So the, and the roof is rusted, so that, those two buildings were a concern to the building department from a structural standpoint. Two semi-trailers on the property that have been stored there for some time, visible from the street, do not appear to be functional or operationally roadworthy. And there appears to be a raised standalone platform on the property that appears to be leaning. So you have three, those items are from the building department. My item was the storage of the tires out front, and I notice the storage of some portable, portageons in the back. So I guess I'd like responses to, you know. Out of it suggesting all of them have to be resolved within a year, but I think we should have some reasonable anticipated timeframe for dealing with these.
Well, I mean, as far as the, when you get into, that's Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher is a resident Shelby Township. Some of you may know him, okay? He runs, more, him and his son run a small porta potty business, okay? Not the Iana Fab building on 22, but the other small building that was there. Mr. Fisher rented from, I have an 8,000 square foot barn. 19, in the late 70s, he rented from my grandfather, and then he moved over to the other side of 22, you may remember. But then that building sold back in 2012. Mr. Fisher had to leave, and he come over, and he asked my grandmother if he, if she had room, and she said yes, okay? She took him in and let him rent. He needed somewhere to go. He's a resident. They, they were always friends, so she let him in there, okay? And that helped with my grandmother's medical expenditure and everything at the end. Eventually, she did have to move in a nursing home.
I mean, we really just need to get to.
See, the point. The point is, I, I know is pretty, is there, no one likes to look at a porta potty, but, and we're trying to keep everything more or less behind the building, so it's not unsightly as people drive by. But I mean, he still needs to run his business also. I mean, you know what I mean?
I think, I think we need some, some timeframe and some response. Some things can be responded to perhaps easily, but just moving things around, there's some need to be moved. You know, I think we, we need to, I don't want to do this on the fly again. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined again to be supportive, like I was in the last one, but I think in fairness to how we're doing this, we need to have this in writing in some meaningful way. I mean, 30 more days, you know, you just came to the counter a couple of weeks ago, and we got you on this agenda. I mean, it's not unfair to ask us to make sure we're doing this the proper way, in, in spirit of public safety.
I would like to address your concerns, so, because I would like to see this go through. So, you're saying the tire and the trailers?
And I'm happy to meet with them afterwards and go over everything in detail.
Right, yeah. And Mr. Wynn, as you know, is very, is very accessible, very approachable, so I'm sure.
But at the same time, it's kind of ironic, because we're residential, in a heavy manufacturing, you know what I'm saying? So it's kind of like, you want us to look residential, but at the same time, we're not allowed to look manufactured, you know? Always just moved out of the building, and their place was never slightly, you know, I mean.
But you want to be residential in a.
Right, and I understand that, too. It's just, I mean, can we find some happy middle ground?
Mr. Chairman, I think there's plenty of opportunity for compromise and middle ground here. We want you to be there. We want, and I'm speaking for myself, we, we want that house to be a, a good living environment for everybody. We don't want to shut that down, but we also want to just maybe control some of the, and kind of, this is an opportunity for all of us collectively to find some common ground, and I'm sure it exists. I'm positive it does.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'm worth, I think it's worth exploring. I'm prepared to explore that. I saw a link with you both.
Should we call, should we call your office?
Just call me tomorrow morning.
Well, first, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone further consideration of the Class A non-conforming use application for William and Jennifer Betham for property located at 5,022 Mile Road until the applicant responds to the concerns regarding outside storage and the condition of the accessory, accessory buildings.
Okay, moved by Moore, supported by Dalu. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexmanowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyer. Chair votes yes. Okay.
Can you please sign in?
Okay, next item, under Old Business. John Abro proposed, Mr. Wynn, do you handle that one?
Yes. The applicant was unable to attend tonight, and you may, this may recall, this is the 21 and Van Dyke, the former Big Boy Restaurant site. And we had them in, I think in August, they were talking about redevelopment, and he wanted to kind of come back and just clarify procedurally how we would go about that process. And I don't think he needs to be here for me to explain this, but that site is zone C1, which is local retail, and they want to do a, a strip center with two tenants that have drive-through windows. C1 specifically does not allow drive-through except for accessory to a bank. So the only option here is to rezone the property. I'm not sure that's such a bad idea. If we can get, you know, get that new user, remember, it was a nice-looking plan, nice-looking building. I think it's probably a reasonable rezoning. To accommodate their concern about timing, you know, if they wanted to submit a site plan to go along with the rezoning, they could submit it as a companion application. So, but I want, I want everybody to understand rezoning would be necessary to accommodate what they're asking for. I don't want them to submit a site plan and say, well, we really can't even address this. And I thought about the Board of Appeals option. That really doesn't work, because the ordinance is very clear. So I just wanted to, you don't do anything more than receive and file this, I think, but it's, I think, I will communicate to Mr. Abro, that's his process, and, you know, we can process this efficiently and get him in here and do both simultaneously, if he's interested in going that route.
It looks a little better than what it was.
Yeah, it's a great reuse. I think we all agree that.
But two, but two drive-throughs, especially the way, I mean, the traffic.
It's, it's going to be a little challenging.
Okay.
What he indicated to me is that these, at least one of these is, is like a sandwich shop that doesn't get a lot of drive-through activity. So he's going to have, he's going to have some challenges in making that work.
Very short storage lane.
Yeah, there's not enough stacking there.
Is, is there a architectural requirement?
Yes.
For vehicle storage?
Six spaces.
When you have a drive-through?
Yes. Now, six spaces. That's what the ordinance requires. Now, in the past, we have taken, this may be one, there may be some items here that would have to end up going to the Board of Appeals, Mr. Wexmanowski. And we, when we've done that, we've always made sure they provided some documentation. You know, the, the stacking requirements and the drive-through for McDonald's differ from those of perhaps a Subway. And, you know, we asked for their experience levels to see what's going to make sure it's going to work, because we don't want to put something on the site if it's not going to work. Then we're just compounding the problem. So that's a challenge they would face as the applicant. I'll pass on those concerns to them, too.
This is a complete knockdown rebuild?
Complete knockdown rebuild.
Mr. Chair, motion to receive and file.
Support.
The proposed.
Yeah, moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next, if you, as you recall, if you recall, there was a request for a rezoning application and a site plan application for Cutler Shelby Properties regarding a property at 23 and Mound. The applicants asked to come and, and readdress the board. Mr. Wynn, do you want to introduce this?
Yes. The, you may recall the properties on the north side of 23 Mile Road, west of Mound Road. I think it's a 10-acre site, and the, the original plan that was submitted was for rezoning to R1C and the development of 41 detached, single-family lots. And the lots were principally 60 feet wide by 123 deep. After the planning commission made the recommendation, the next step would automatically go to the board. Mr. Cutler and I had some subsequent discussions, and he said, you know, I'd really like to try to provide an opportunity to address some of those changes, and came up with some revisions. And, and. Mr. Cutler, if you could maybe put the board up at least, thank you. The number of lots was reduced from 41 to 37, and there were some increase in the setbacks. And there's a very complete summary provided by Mr. Cutler with your package. I guess I, what, what I didn't have a chance to talk about at the original hearing was a little bit about this, what I would call small lot, single-family development. When, when we talk about small lot, I'm generally referring to lots that are somewhere between 50 feet wide and 70 feet wide. And that type of sort of hybrid development bridges a gap between your more typical 80 and 90-foot wide detached, single-family homes, which are very common in Shelby, and the multiple family, which, you know, you have common walls and, and higher density. The, the smaller, single-family units typically not only have reduced yard space, but reduce setbacks, and typically have private roads, not public roads. Although, I'm going to show you an example later of one that is on a public road. The other concern is you typically are concerned with not only building placement, but architectural design, so that if you kind of shrink these sites, that you have privacy concerns about where windows are placed and how outdoor yard space is arranged. I, I've had a long history of dealing with these. The first, the first two projects of this type of development, Macomb County, were built, one in Washington Township and one in Clinton Township, both by the same developer. The Washington one is on 26 Mile Road, it's called Copper Creek. And I recall when I was the planning consultant in Washington for about 10 years, that property was zoned high-density, multiple-family, and a group of local developers came in and said they wanted to develop this new form of residential. So we actually amended their ordinance and did it as what we, as a special land use under the multiple family, and we came up with standards on setbacks and architectural design. So we had to come up with a really strong set of ordinance requirements. After that one was built, the property just to the west of it, along that 26 Mile Road, where the, not where, not where the trail comes through, was called Breckenridge. And that's another similar example of a small lot, 50 to 70-foot wide lots, mostly 60-foot, I think. Shelby's first example of that was Pine Creek, which is on Van Dyke, north of 24 Mile Road. Again, detached, single-family. Much of the Central Park development, a big portion of that at 22 and Van Dyke, is small lots, 60-foot lots. So I think the problem begins, it's hard to visualize what those look like, especially when you're looking at it in a, a two-dimensional sheet. So for that reason, I, I did take some screenshots of aerial photos of these sites to just give you a kind of a reference point of what they look like, built out, and then drove through and took some photos. So I think you, I can show them, but I think it'd be hard to, you have to turn around and look at them. But I, I wanted to give you an idea visually of what those sites look like, and actually, when they're built out. And again, you can see, you have a fairly, a nice-looking residential building that wouldn't be uncommon in a bigger subdivision, but the homes have been proportionally downsized to, to be something a little smaller. So those are just a few of the examples that we had on the, that I provided for you. Again, because I think, again, the visualization was hard to see. Again, you can see that the lots are closer together. Usually, though, on one side of those, the windows are either opaque, or they're, one side has a blank wall, so you don't have family room looking into family room. You may, have any been up to Washington where the Glacier Club is, the golf course? We, we were helpful in that project, where we actually had to design the houses to fit those building sites, so you had private yard space, not backing up to private yard space. So, you know, looking at this particular site and applying that, that type of use, I would think, first of all, this is what I would consider a transitional site. You have a more of a traditional, single-family neighborhood to the north with 80-foot lots, and then you have some old retail to the east and some duplexes across this, and multiple family across the street. I do think this concept's a reasonable use for this site. It's, I think it's reasonably well-aligned with the master plan. And I also think, looking at the bigger picture, this type of form of housing is also well-aligned with the changing demographic conditions. Somebody wants to live in a detached, single-family home, but they want a smaller footprint, they want less maintenance. I, I think this product might work here fairly well. I think, again, we had that study done by some grad students a while back that kind of identified this as being a, a form that, that's reasonably adaptable to these kinds of sites. So I do think there's some reasonable alignment, again, with our planning policies and this form of development for this particular site, Mr. Chairman. Having said that, I just really wanted to see if there was any, any other comment on this, now that you've seen this, and, you know, based on the changes that Mr. Cutler offered, whether you would be willing to reconsider this. He would have to come back and make some sort of supplemental submission, because we would want to have kind of reopen that public hearing. I think that'd only be fair if we did it that way again. But, you know, otherwise, we would just send off the original application to the board, and the board would have to respond to that, your original recommendation from earlier this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone wish to comment?
I do, Mr. Chair. Just a comment. Some of the lot sizes are less than 60 feet wide, and one in particular being less than 50 feet wide.
Come by that, too, so it's.
Okay, so it's under 60. This is under 60, 60. So that'll be a little bit more than the, that's only my concern, Travis.
Someone on this end that had a question?
Mr. Chairman?
Wexmanowski.
To Mr. Wynn, when we had the discussion in July, I guess it was here, there were two issues that came up. So one question that was asked in July was whether or not the plan meets the R1C requirements. So does this new plan meet R1C requirements?
No, it doesn't.
Yes or no?
It does not.
It still does not?
It does not.
Okay.
And that may require a, a different approach to this, maybe as a PUD would be one approach.
Okay. And the second comment we had back then, Mr. Wyer's comment, was concerned that these were only two-bedroom units. Are the plans to have larger, homes larger than two bedrooms, or will all these still be two-bedroom units?
I'm going to let Mr. Cutler respond to that one. I don't know.
Yeah, come up to the mic with your name and address.
So my name is Walt Cutler. My address is 4318, 43181 Shana Road. Been there 20 years, I guess I should build. So we have, we have a couple of different plans, and all of the plans have at least two bedrooms. Where they have two bedrooms, what we've designed is a, a unit that has a study in lieu of a bedroom, though the, the study can actually be a bedroom. But they're all at least 1,600 square feet, and they range in size to, to a couple of thousand square feet. And generally, what we've built, and we've built hundreds of these, we design our product principally for, for the market segment that's, that's younger and is looking for first, in, in large part, people that are looking for, for their bedroom on their first floor. And so there's always generally a bedroom on the first floor, and then we have lofts, we have loft units. Would you like me to show you a couple of examples?
I would like to see that. Can we do that?
Sure. Go ahead.
Well, that's what we built, and, and I built nearly 700 of those. But in the past, what I've done is I built them mostly as duplexes. And today, because of changes in, in mortgages, you're unable really, as a developer and as a builder, to sell units that are attached under the current. as a builder, to sell units that are attached under the current financing rules. And so, what we've chosen to do is take our duplexes and separate them. And really, it lends itself to, to a more private community, similar in design to the communities that Mr. Nguyen described, Breckenridge, Steeplechase is another one, which is similar to Copper Creek. And people like those. I built one for my mother. And if you look at the floor plans...
So, if you're going to, if you're going to go over there, take this.
The only two-bedroom unit that we have is this. This is 1,600 square feet. It's got a study in it, which could conceivably be a bedroom, but what we look at is, we've located in an area where oftentimes people use a study today more than they do their living rooms, even. And so, we tried to design our units the way people live. These, these units all have two bedrooms downstairs. In some cases, this is a bedroom upstairs. In the case that you use the front as a study, there's two bedrooms upstairs. So, they're, they're not small units. We build a quality unit. They all, they're all a lot of brick. And, you know, they're, they're popular with, with a lot of people.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mr. Nguyen. Are these units bigger than the ones that would be in Grant Park, square-foot-wise?
What park?
Grant Park.
You mean Central Park?
Or Central Park, yeah. So, you said Central Park had a number of these units?
I think, I think these are smaller.
I'm familiar with those.
I think the, the ones in Central Park that are in 60-foot lots, Mr. Wexmanowski, I think are a slightly bigger unit than this.
The ones in Central Park, two floors like this, or...
Many of them, most of them are two-story. Central Park has 70-foot lots, which is the pulley portion of it, 60-foot, which are multiple builders, and then there are some other hybrids through there that are smaller. There, there are some in Central Park that are the size. But the photos I showed you were not those. These might be just a little bit smaller, several hundred square feet, maybe 500 square feet smaller. But again, those, there's a little more variation in Central Park, because there were so many different builders on the 60-foot lots.
Was it planned unit development?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's one of the struggles we had, is how do we call this? I mean, he, Mr. Cutler could have applied for rezoning to multiple and then come in with special land use, but then you're rezoning it to multiple, and you may not want it to rezon multiple. It's one of those, how do we get here? You know, there's, there's always that challenge, too.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cutler, how many are different elevations you're going to have in this design? Are you building the whole project in one time, or as you sell them, you're building this project?
So, in this environment, you're just not going to spec out a lot of units. I mean, the environment's changed over, you know, over the past 15 or 20 years. Very few people are going to go in and build out a whole site and spec it out. So, but the market's changing. And where will the market be in another year or two? Who knows? I expect that we're going to have a stable market to an improving market here in the near term. And the near term, to me, is the next couple of years.
In your mind, Mr. Cutler, are you using multiple designs for the houses? Or what, what would you think in your mind, how are you going to end up deciding that?
What, what we do, Commissioner, is we have two or three different designs that we work through, and those are those designs. And we work with basically a basic building footprint, and we build from that footprint and don't vary considerably. We'll change up the elevation a little bit, but economics just say that you don't, you know, redesign a home every time you build it. We work with a standard footprint and a standard design, popular, built hundreds of them, and feel comfortable with those designs.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Moore?
Mr. Cutler, the two-bedroom plan that you have, does that, the study you had mentioned, does that have a closet?
Yes.
Okay, so they would consider that for appraisal purposes, for mortgage financing? I'm just thinking about the whole neighborhood and the feel, you know, a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom, like Mr. Byer had pointed out in our previous meeting. And then the other question I had for you was, are, are these going to have basements?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. I don't know what you're looking for, Mr. Nguyen.
No, I, I just wanted to offer, you know, kind of offer some, another dimension of this that may not, may have talked about last time. So, I, you know, I've, well, I'm sure Mr. Cutler and I have another conversation about if he wants to bring this back, because a couple of options, either take the original plan to the board, or come back and have something more formal where you'll, we'd ask you to make a decision on.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Okay, Planning Director's report, Mr. Nguyen.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have several items this time. We only had, you can see from our monthly activity report, we only had two sign applications this month, which was, last month, which was pretty surprising. Do you have a few other items? I think we had five or six of them today, though. That's what happens.
That's what happened when you hired Julie, you actually had to get some work done.
We're turning around these sign applications in about 24 hours, actually. We want to talk about a possibility for a study meeting. We have two projects that are, that have been, we've talked about the counter, one on 24 Mile Road between Sheiner and Hayes, yeah, and, and then one, and the whole northeast square mile section number one, that whole square mile, where they're bringing water and sewer as a special assessment district. And I think there might be some value in having a meeting where we kind of talk informally about their plans before it comes to a formal submission. And I've been kind of encouraged to ask you if you had, if you'd be willing, we have some time next week, if, I know it's close to the holidays, but either Monday or Wednesday, if you'd be willing to consider a special meeting for about an hour to talk about those projects. If not, we would defer till January. But I wanted to at least raise it tonight. That would be either next Monday, a week from tonight, or a week from Wednesday, the 17th.
Anybody object to next Monday?
Fine.
I think Monday works.
Okay.
I think Wednesday is not.
Okay.
Bill?
I'll schedule something.
Schedule something for Monday.
The master plan, we, we submitted the request for qualifications, put it on our website, that gets wide exposure, also sent it to half a dozen local planning consultants, where we should be getting responses to those are due on the 18th. So, we get those responses, we'll have, I'd like maybe three or four that might be interested in working in a subcommittee to vet those responses, and then interview which we think the qualified firms, and, you know, begin to select who, what firm we're going to hire to do the master plan for us. I've sensed a lot of interest. We'll get, we'll get some really creative proposals. I'm looking forward to that. You'll see in front of you, we have a left drawing of an electronic message sign. That's actually an application that's being submitted and considered by the Board of Appeals on Thursday night. This is for a project on the east side of M-53 between 23 and 24 Mile Road. The ordinance allows for these types of signs, but only in heavy manufacturing districts along the freeway. So, the idea was, the zoning Board of Appeals is only considering a setback variance request, but I wanted to share this with you. It's my recommendation, the Board of Appeals postponed this for another month so we get a detailed landscaping plan. They're actually, the sign they're showing here with the brick base and the brick columns and the landscaping is what they want to do. But we haven't had one of these in our community, and I just wanted to kind of share that with you. If you have any comments you want to share with us or the Board of Appeals, feel free to get them to me, and I'll pass them on to the board. Other item.
Nguyen?
Yes?
Just a comment, not on this sign, but the one by Lakeside, the shrubs just cover the sign.
Which one is that?
By Lakeside Mall.
This is, this is not, this is not your standard, this is more of a billboard-type sign, yeah.
I understand that, just saying.
Well, they're not going to, they're going to put, it would be low-level landscaping along the brick base. They're not going to, they're not going to put this in at the expense that they're talking about and then cover it up with landscaping. But the idea would be something different than what you see, your typical billboard along the freeway. Because I don't think any of us envision that as being the image for our community. But we have to provide for all land uses. We can't be categorically exclusive. So, this is the first time one of these came in, and I wanted to make sure that it got some wider distribution and exposure to the rest of the boards and commissions that might have some input. After the last meeting, I think maybe it was Lisa that brought up the question about, is there some way we can maybe consolidate our big packages of plans and do it electronically? Well, we're not, we're not suggesting we buy everybody laptops, so, but, but if, if anybody has an interest in getting their application package electronically on a disk or a flash drive, we can do that. And I, you know, if you wanted, would rather not pick up a big package and just pick up something else, we're, we're able to explore that, because we do that with the board now. All the packages that get to the board are done electronically. And if they'd be more efficient for everybody, we'd be willing to explore that idea. So, give that some thought. You know, because the last couple of packages, though, especially the last one, was about two inches thick. We don't have envelopes big enough for some of those.
Some feedback?
Yeah.
I, I thought the last package had too many items, and it not necessarily, the size was wrong, but there were things that just were not material to the question.
Such as?
I mean, I mean, you have utility plans, and you have...
Those are, those are required suggestions.
Yes, those are required, yeah.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is...
And there are also things that we need to consider when evaluating, so whether we consider or not.
Yeah, that's, that's a challenge. I mean, I'd rather err on the side of giving you too much than not giving you enough. I'd rather you say that, Mr. Wexmanowski, and say there was not enough information in there. I needed something else. So, balancing those two, I'd rather err on the side of giving you more.
I understand, that requires decision-making, but...
But, you know, if you, if you, for some of you that would feel more comfortable with an electronic version of the agenda, I just want to, Julie and I are willing to do that. You know, so just give it some thought. The other item, you have a brochure called Make Macomb Your Home. That's the annual publication that Macomb County puts out that are available. It's their primary promotional publication. They do it every year. Three years ago, or three or four years ago, we started participating. And now we have a two-page spread, and we're one of the more prominently featured ones. And I just wanted to pass it on to everybody. I think it's a nice publication. Again, Shelby is participating in that in a pretty big way.
What, what does that cost?
It costs us $3,000, once a year.
So, we're lucky to have those two pages.
For this picture? $3,000. What, what's the return?
Well, there are thousands of these printed.
That's for the Tuesday meetings. This is Monday.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Well, we'd rather participate and be part of that process, I guess. If they're going to market the county and each individual community, we want to, we want to be aligned with that.
If we don't pay it, they'll assist us anyway, right?
Well, no, they won't put it in there.
Oh.
We won't be in there.
What's that?
If we don't pay them, we won't get put in there. We provide the copy and the pictures, they do the layout and the publication. Every year, we tweak it a little more.
I lost count, was that five or six?
What?
Anything else?
I have nothing else, I have nothing else today.
I don't think I know where else to be.
This is too long a report, I think.
I agree. It's about Make Macomb Your Home, I do that during the day.
I always get, is there, don't you have anything more, Mr. Nguyen? I think I lost it.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Oh, that's too funny. I've...